Okay, and we'll call this meeting to order of the Lyle Township December 6th meeting. And we'll start with the Fudge of Allegiance to the Biden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Kirk Powitz, you want to have a roll call though?
Sure. Supervisor Hewitt.
Here.
Trustee Geist.
Here.
Trustee Page.
Here.
Assessor Traubridge.
Here.
Highway Commissioner Young.
Here.
And I'm here, Clark Powitz. Could we add on who else is here online?
Via Zoom, there's Bahia also O H L. You're talking to somebody who runs her Siri fan, keeps her window open.
And in person, would you like to say your name?
Yes, my name is Jordana Wasaki.
Which person?
Jordana, Y O R D A N A.
And? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, on the agenda, we have next is the public comments. And just make sure I'm sharing the screen. And so in our responses, we have zero responses for J. And then in the audience, I wasn't sure if anybody here wanted to make any public comment or online. Okay. Then we'll go with the next item on the agenda, which is number five, is the appointment of the township attorney, one of Jordana. Wasaki.
Wasaki.
Wasaki, sorry.
Sorry, you don't have to say the last word.
Wasaki, okay. And Charles. Harvest, okay. From Harvest, Condon, and Brusani. And as everybody saw in the packet there, they have a letter of agreement of engagement along with some fabulous resumes. And so we'll let right now, as we're going through those resumes, I can see that we have a a firm that's very much focused on municipal local government law. Jordana here lives in the township, so she'll be able to be here as opposed to be on Zoom. We've had a lot of technical issues with Zoom not always connecting. As everyone in probably the country is having this past few years with connectivity. So in person is, I really feel, a much better way to have our to have our attorney. And she very much specializes in municipal law with the clients that we can see.
Do anyone, I don't know if anyone had any questions or anything, but my firm does strictly local government law. We defend, you know, all these counties, townships, districts of all sorts in various litigation, and then we're general counsel for a number of person park districts, the township down in Will County, and then the village of I task up. We are general counsel for. We do a lot of, you know, special projects for various towns, maybe go and some of the other towns around here. And as Stephen said, I live in Woodbridge, so I'm right. It's 12 minutes from my house, so this is perfect. This is ideal. So I look forward to representing him in township. I'm familiarizing myself with the nuances of township law and for the other local aspects of local government. I'm very familiar, so. This would be a good partnership.
Thank you, Jordana. Jean, would you, or would anybody like to make a motion to we're approving?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Jordana is Jordana?
It's like you are Dana.
Okay.
I'm going to remember it.
You are Dana. I make a motion to approve the appointment of Jordana Wasaki to the township as our attorney.
Thank you, trustee Page, and a second.
I just had a question. So just so I understand your capacity, so will you be representing all of the township? Are you representing, are you supervisor Hewitt? What is your, what is your capacity as far as Lyle Township goes?
The appointment is for the township attorneys. I represent the entire township.
Okay, awesome. Okay. Sorry.
Understanding.
I understand that Mr. Young, as the head commissioner, as his own counsel, that's covered under the statute. But otherwise, I would.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to clear, okay, I just wanted clarification on.
Diane, could you catch us up? We have no idea what's going on. We don't know why, no offense to you, but we don't know why she's here and Ed Mullins isn't or anything.
Okay, in the last meeting, as we could, it was a long meeting. And the last two meetings, we were having some massive technical issues where Zoom is, as I was mentioning, isn't always as connected as we would like it to be. And so Ed Mullin lives in Chicago. It's a drive and he can't be here at the, when we need him to be here. And so he has, he realized and he gave his notice that we needed to have somebody closer that could actually attend the meetings in person. Because Zoom was becoming a huge hindrance. And after the meeting, there's a lot of feedback about that. There's been feedback as we were talking in the meeting.
Yeah, I felt very strongly that, and then half the time, he couldn't answer questions. And I don't know if it was a connectivity issue or if he just truly didn't have the answers to the question. So I appreciate that you have township and municipality experience so that maybe we don't have to wait always to have questions answered. Okay.
And there's a second person involved, so that one of the things that we didn't have with Ed was a full team. And so we need to have a variety of, we need to have the documents reviewed in a more timely way. We need to make sure that our that we have the time here in the meetings in particular. So after reviewing and talking to a variety of different supervisors about this issue as well, we've, I've done my due diligence into making sure that the attorneys have been researched on this topic. It's not easy to find somebody that specializes in municipal law in the township. So she, as we can see.
Well, they seem perfectly qualified. I guess it's just like the last time when we went through this process, I thought we reviewed the options and we weighed them before we made a decision. So I just was, I just didn't, I didn't, it was just all new, so.
Very true. And in our lived experience, come to find out, Zoom was a huge difficulty in having our attorney always remotely. And so finding somebody that could be here that will help us in the, in the time that we need, I think is absolutely critical.
Didn't he say at the last meeting, though, we'd be willing to?
Yes, and again, I know it's hard to get to Chicago and back. For me, I know it can often be a full hour at the, if I get really lucky, and it can often be two hours, you know, round trip.
Question, this is your decision, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, not exactly.
Well, so. Well, no, let me, let me, does anybody ask you about your attorney? Do you have to, right, do you have to put your attorney up for review or this?
No, because it's just me.
So what the law is, is that it's my choice and that I'm seeking the approval of the trustees because we've, we've had this need where we needed a local person with municipal experience that can come to our meetings. And that's just been, become more and more obvious in the last several meetings. So.
And how will the practice work? Because they have, so we'll have a combination of different attorneys that specialize in different areas that would be working with us then, as it says here.
Yeah, so when certain issues come up, that, I mean, I let me put it this way, I don't want to waste the township's time and money doing something that I'm not expert. It's not, it's not cost effective. So, you know, there's certain very specific matters, you know, if you're, if, you know, there's an employment like a bargaining agreement or something that needs to be negotiated, that's specialized. That I would assist you at finding someone who specialized in that. That would help, you know, to break costs. If I had to worry about bargaining, you'd be paying a lot of money for me.
Speed, got it.
Okay, so, so in those specialized circumstances, you know, I'll be happy to work with Diane and with the board to pick someone who would be appropriate and essentially outsource that piece of it. But for day to day, month to month, 90% of what you guys need, I would be the person of contact. And then my partner Chuck Hervis will be backup in case I do other things in my life.
So, well, I appreciate your background and speech and debate. I'm a professional speech coach, so I love, I loved reading that.
Yeah.
So.
Those are, those are the questions I had. I mean, you're available, you're going to be able to meet with us. You're, so I appreciate knowing that and, because that was certainly a concern. Okay, thank you. A second.
Thank you, trustee Geist, and then any more discussion? And we'll call the poets.
Trustee Geist.
Yes.
Trustee Page.
Yes.
Supervisor Hewitt.
Yes. Okay, welcome, Jordana. Next, we have the approval process of the workshop schedules. Share the screen. Okay. Share the right screen.
The 22nd year 22 is just the end, right?
Yes.
That's your amendment?
Yes. Well, frankly, I'm sure that there's going to need to be a conversation amongst Assessor Traubridge and myself, and we can figure that out. But there's been an under, we're, we're making sure that our county is matching our budget and the existing numbers that we have spent in 2022 are matching the budget that we.
We're way over in notice. Right?
Yes, we are. And when you look at, for example, we need to rent, that's one of our main pieces that when we first passed it, we realized that we needed to amend it. And when we look at other departments, frankly, the assessors department right now is at 668,000, which with a budget of 506,000 is extremely over as well. So we need to all make some adjustments to make sure that that comes to an agreed amount. So we have some time, which is when we look at the schedule for this amended budget cycle for Assessor Traubridge and ourselves. We have December 14th at 7:00 PM would be the budget workshop. And then at 7:30, and this is, we're talking about our next regular meeting. So we would start a bit early, about 7 o'clock with the public budget workshop. And then at 7:30 is the board meeting that would give us the required amount of time to make sure that we then pass the budget in the amended budget in February 8, on February 8th of 2023, that's our regular board meeting. And then when we look up, because we're negotiating the two different schedules on top of each other, and it kind of means that we're really going to be super knowledgeable about the budget and, and all of our financial dealings. For the 2024 proposed schedule, January 4th would be a public workshop. And then January 11th, the normal budget, the normal meeting would be our, when we're going to approve the tentative budget with the posting dates required right here on the 6th, before the 6th, with March 8th being the day that we pass the 2023, 2024 budget.
I did not see this in the, in the package.
It's in the packet.
Is it now in the packet? Okay, because I don't have these dates. Okay, great.
So this is.
It must have just gotten, got it.
Had to make sure we went through the proper processes. So this is the proposed schedule. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions? There's one meeting that isn't in here that relates to this process of the levy, which would mean December 27th is when we would need to make sure that that is turned in. So the 27th, what is a good time for everybody? It has to be before the.
For what?
The 27th is just the day that it needs to be brought down to the county. That's the deadline of the county, not to pass it. It should be missed prior to that.
No, it means, we need 20 days from today, because today we're, for the truth in taxation law, today we are going to, on the agenda is the estimate, estimated amounts for the levy and we need to make a determination that that's under a 5% increase. That determination is to be made 20 days before the levy is passed. And since 12/26 is a holiday, that pushes it to 12:00.
But if it's under 5%, you have to wait them.
If it's, if it's under the 5%, you don't have to have notice and hearing.
Right.
But you still need to make a determine, you still need to provide an estimated, estimated amount for the levy 20 days before passing the levy ordinance.
So December 27th, the clerk's office closes at 4:30. So it would need to be done before 4:30. And that's making sure that we, that the highway and the township get the levy for this next year.
On the 27th.
So what are you proposing, like a midday meeting? Because she still has the time to get to the county.
It's going to be, remember how we did this last year, but it's going to be a quick one that we approve the exact same thing that we're talking about with slightly different. It's a, it's a, right now, we're giving notice and then we're approving the resolution.
So just, are you thinking like, are you going to throw a timeout? What is noon 1?
Do we know what it is?
It's Tuesday.
Okay, so how about early? So before the, before the day starts for us, probably?
As early as you can do it.
Can we do it at 9? Is that early enough, Debbie?
Anytime is fine, 9:00 AM.
Because.
Here, 9:00 AM.
Is that early enough, Debbie?
Okay, 9:00 AM is when that's going to be. Okay. Okay, then we're going to go over the levy history for the township fund.
I'm assuming any kind of special for you since you're not coaching.
And yeah, I'll make it work.
As supervisor Hewitt, did you need approval of the workshop schedules?
I, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the workshop schedule.
A second.
Thank you, trustee Geist and trustee Page. Any discussion? Okay, and then we'll call them.
Trustee Geist, yes, trustee Page.
Yes.
Supervisor Hewitt.
Yes. Okay, and then when we're looking at the levy, the history of the levy is.
Excuse me one minute, that was for the budget workshops. Are you adding a special meeting of the 27th into that motion? Or do you want another motion with a special meeting or you're calling the meeting?
This, it doesn't need to be a part of this motion, correct? We're just going to call them. We're just figuring out to making sure that we have the ability to do that. Thank you. Okay. Then as we're looking at the, this is the history of the. Oh. So we have the history of the highway fund.
I just provided that information, the levy that I'm proposing for next year, actually next year, this year's levy is down then $275,000. In general, road and bridge, 200,000, in pretty good shape there. And we're up in social security by 25,000. And then we're back down again in the IR. In general, when we went through this process, it starts to look at the budget. We're in pretty good shape with respect to equipment. We have three items that I and the roads are in pretty good shape. And also, we have to take into consideration that I use an MFT many, two years. So that kind of saves going through, it's just way outbound, that's why.
Thank you, sir. We're, okay, and so that's the highway. And then as we're looking at the town fund from a budgetary perspective, we're making sure that we're not, it's again a 4.99% increase. It's not the same as last time. What we're really realizing is, is the general assistance need has gone up because of a variety of housing issues seen nationally as well as locally. We realize that there's going to be a variety of conversations that are going to be taking place for the next six months really about our budget, but this is where we're at as a levy. We spent less than 900,000. We spent less, we're, we buy, buy under 900,000. And when we're looking at our accumulation, it is very modest. Okay, then, as we're looking at the discussion of the the next agenda point is the discussion of action on estimated tax levy with the resolution, with the general assistance and town fund. And so there's a certificate of compliance of truth in taxation. And that's pretty.
Yeah, just to be clear, that will be, that will be finalized on the 27th when you approve the levy. Because that is a certificate that indicates that you complied with truth in taxation. So that's, that's when the levy is approved and filed. The resolution that has the, sorry, it's the other. I don't know, sorry. Yes, that one. So the resolution is playing out kind of what the estimate is for the aggregate levy for for the 2022 tax year and then the what the percent increases from the 2021 tax levy. Numbers are my thing. I can answer questions about the wording.
So Linda and Linda, the accountant, went through in extreme detail to make sure that we have solid numbers with our estimates. And we're continuing to go through the budget, which everyone is going to see a lot more of in the next few days. Any questions?
Not for me. So we're looking at raising the levy 4.99, and the reason is for general assistance.
No, the reason, there's a lot of reasons for this. And when we look through the, the distribution here, general, that's one of the aspects of that is changing. What is happening is there's a 7% national inflationary rate. So if you have a 7% national inflationary rate, virtually any amount is going to be not even catching up with inflation. So 4.99 is a good 2% below inflation. Any other questions?
No questions.
And then would you like to make a motion to approve this?
I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you, trustee Page.
Loving.
Am I missing a finish? I don't see any.
There's a backside.
There were some.
I don't think I shattered my.
Is it not?
I don't.
I didn't add the numbers, but I assume the general assistance can be in some place, and I don't see them, excuse me, but.
There are several different versions. Let me make sure that I have the right one. Well, frankly, this wasn't, it wasn't enunciated, the amount in the general assistance, but it's already been, it's, this is not a full budget. This is an estimation. And it's a part of, there's a variety of pieces that are missing, but this is the amount that the levy would be.
So what are we approving then? If this is just an estimation, why do we have to approve it?
Okay, so this is for collecting last year's taxes.
Oh.
Okay. So.
The truth in taxation law under the online property code requires us to provide notice to the public about how much the levy is going to be so that we are transparent about what the increases from last year. The increase is under 5%, so we're not required to do a notice and hearing, but we are required to provide notice to the public about what our estimate of the levy is. Now, the estimate can change. Why does it say it's under that 5%? It can change between now and 27. But what, what we're trying to approve tonight is, is an estimate so that the public can be informed about what the levy is.
So it could be less.
As long as it doesn't go over the, as long as we don't increase more than 5% from last year. 5% is the, is the trigger for the notice and hearing. We don't have time to do that this month.
But does this schedule foot?
I'm sorry.
Does it add up?
Yes, it does. The accountant and.
So how much, how much more is general?
There's, okay, so when we look at, for example, when we look at the very top with the assessors, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 categories with a lot in miscellaneous, okay? And this is partially because we're trying to put the pieces together in the document and make sure that all the formatting is proper and everything. And there's a lot of pieces, this. And there's a lot of, um, pieces. This is again an estimate so that we can understand where we're at with, with these. But this does add up two million, three hundred and eighty-eight. Through, um, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. When you go back through. Our accountant has thoroughly done the math to make sure that it adds up.
So my only question is. This miscellaneous, a hundred and eleven thousand in miscellaneous is a, it's a large number. That's not really. Being clearly allocated. So.
Can I answer that? Can I respond to that?
Okay.
Um, there, as they said, in this, in this summary. There are seven categories. They're, they're main numbers. They're out there. Um, in the, the. Projected budget that I have submitted, I actually have fifteen line items. So the fifteen line items. We have seven that, that total. X and then the remaining eight total a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand. I have them itemized. They're not itemized in this.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
That's what's going on is that John gave us an amount and is that the exact amount that is on there?
Okay, thank you.
Eight forty-two, one.
So we're working with, um, the system that we currently have, which is a bit of the old system. So we're trying to modify that as fast as we can. And get more details, but next week you're going to have a whole lot more details with the presentation from there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mm-hmm. So do we have a second?
Can I ask one more question? The levy. Two million, four hundred sixty-three thousand last year's. And if you're over five percent, you have to have the tax.
And have the no.
My concern is that you've got a. If I did the calculation, it's one hundred twenty-three thousand to five percent. And you're adding a new, um, transportation. Section that you didn't have last year.
So it's interesting because we've been making sure that the numbers really add up. And so several things are coming up. L, L at once, for example, that we've hardly spent anything, um, near what our transportation budget was, for example. Um, and so we realized that we're at. I don't have the number right up.
I just want to make sure that you considered that.
Oh, yes.
Added that a hundred and sixty thousand.
Of course, of course.
That you're not gonna be.
Of course, and.
Because you're, you're on, you're over budget in other areas. I just.
Of course, and that's exactly why it's so important. And when we were looking, for example, at your levy, we realized that your levy is generally, you're not even. You're right now at an accumulation of seven million dollars.
Yeah.
And then some, and you're generally not spending about eight hundred thousand to a million dollars out of every budget. So there's conversations we all need to have about the amount that we levy and versus the amount that we spend. And how we need to, you know, get those closer. But we're, we're making sure here in the supervisor's office and it looks like the assessors is changing. His, some of his numbers quite a bit to make sure that we're getting closer to our budget. Um, which I think is, is really critically important. So Ed, you are bringing up some fabulous points, which we are thoroughly looking at.
Just making sure.
I agree. Thank you, sir. Okay, any second on that, trustee Geist?
No, sorry, we're still, oh, I, I second. The approval of the estimated.
Okay, for the town fund and, um, any other discussion? Okay, and then a roll call vote.
Trustee guys.
Yes.
Trustee Paige.
Yes.
Supervisor here.
Yes. Okay, then we'll go with the discussion with the, um. Estimated tax and for the road district. Now let Ed spin through everything. From his end.
Actually, I guess. If I'll talk about the waiver of the. Bidding practice. We'll discuss most of the budget because what I've got is a. Describing the numbers I sent up to. Their purchase of six-wheel truck. It actually, we signed a contract that that is going to give you. That's two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty. The second thing that we have to get done is we have fuel tanks, two eight thousand gallons, one for diesel, one for gas, and it takes in the backyard. With thirty-eight years old. Useful life. Thirty-four, thirty. They're old. The useful, estimated useful life for those types of things is thirty. So we, we've got to do something. The insurance costs are going up each year as we do it and the exposure to leakage is what we. Um, so we started that process and we're talking about two hundred, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars there. That's assuming that there's no remediation. They didn't have had leaks. We've had no indication of any leaks at all. There's all sorts of alarm systems that detect that, so we're hoping that. Um, and the rest is just normal progression. So they have a couple, the, the levy in certain areas. But as we go forward, I think we can, we can, we can answer any questions.
I'll make a motion for the Lisle Township Road District twenty-twenty-two tax levy.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I? I make a motion to approve the Lisle Township Road District twenty-twenty-two tax levy ordinance. Okay, um, we need to approve the estimated.
I have to say estimated.
Yeah, and then the ordinance will come on the twenty.
And I can motion to, yep, okay, I make a motion. Sorry, the word estimate is not on here, so it threw me. I apologize.
I know, that's why.
Lisle Township Road District, I make a motion to approve the Lisle Township Road District twenty-twenty-two tax levy estimation.
And I'll second.
And then, um, any discussion? And a roll call vote.
Trustee guys.
Well, trustee Paige.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes. Okay, um, then. We need to discuss the waiver of the bidding process, the purchase of the seven fifty. Board with versalift.
I, that's a typo. It should, versalift model should be B zero dash two seven zero three. That's my. Um. As we sat down and looked at our projected expenses, we looked at the vehicles that we might have to replace over the next. The versalift, as it exists, as it sits on the truck today is twenty years. Um, it's in good shape, but as I, I sent in that package, the bucket truck itself, you can see if you opened up that picture and exposed that picture. You can see with the fiberglass, it broke. Twenty years old. So we started the process of going through and seeing how much it would cost. To replace it. To replace a similar thing, a similar unit would be. Two hundred and thirty thousand. No, I'm sorry, two hundred and eight thousand. And it would be three to five years before we would get. We were talking to the people who we get it through and that two hundred and eight thousand is through a. Through Sourcewell, which is an approved state. Purchasing. And agency. We saw on the lot a slightly bigger unit. It was on there for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a delta of sixteen thousand, four hundred eighty. Um, it's a change between the two. This bigger unit is, is a, the, has a seventy-five foot lift. The existing unit that we built and the one we have is a sixty-five foot lift. It's kind of interesting because the way it works, the lift is bent up on the truck. And it goes like this and then it goes up. For the seventy-five foot. There's a, a ten-foot elevator that takes the whole thing up like this. So you get another ten feet. Not only you get ten feet that way, but for our use, you can park the truck further away from the trees and get in much closer. Once we use it mostly for trimming trees, that's the best thing we can do. And so then let me call your attention and I. I should have pointed this down. We go to, I think it's. The last was page six in the first quote. Where the. For the one, if we just replace the one that we have today. And we, we would receive it in two to three years. But as part of that quote, let me read to you on page six of that quote. Above figure is for the chassis own. Above figure was calculated using state contract X. A big, a dub. Above figure is good through six-two, two thousand twenty-three. All figures do not include any future potential increases. With the file, emission surcharges, freight, destination fees. Raw material or commodity searching. So that quote. At two hundred and eight thousand dollars is going to escalate over three years. I went out and got for the, for the existing unit that sits on the lot today that we could get for two twenty-five, I went out and got a quote from that, from sourcing. Which is the state-approved purchasing, uh, quarter. That came back higher than the two twenty-five. It was two hundred and thirty thousand. So I could go through the state-approved process. And pay two hundred and thirty thousand, I mean, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Or I can buy it just directly for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's what we're asking. Does that make sense?
It does, but I, you know what I think is odd, what I just think it's, it's interesting because it's not odd, but. That you get a quoted price, but by the time you take delivery, the price is different.
It's three years down.
Well, that's three, I, I, yeah, but it's three years of turnaround time on there and from a, from a manufacturing perspective. It's why is.
They don't have our money, right?
Um.
So, yeah, there, we, we keep the money. We don't pay until we pay.
Okay.
And the other thing too, I forgot to mention, is our unit will age three years. So it would decrease the price that you get on the used market. Used market is very.
It's very strong. We're, it's very hard to get something anytime soon. I, we're trying to do that with the food pantry and it's very difficult.
It is. It is. And I think we were very fortunate to stumble across this. Bucket truck. It's not, we can pick it tomorrow.
So when. You like to make a motion to approve the waiver of the bidding process?
I will make a motion to approve the waiver of the given. Of the replacement bucket truck. Did I say that right?
For the Ford, well, the Ford seven fifty versalift.
Yeah, I, I.
Thank you. Um, and then a second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Geist. Any discussion? And, uh, roll call vote.
Um, trustee guys.
Yes.
Trustee Paige.
Yes.
Supervisor here.
Yes. Um, then that is passed, the waiver in the bidding process. Um, next we have the announcement of the mental health board and how this is going to be publicized. It's very simple. We're going to put it on Facebook, on. The website. It's simply bitly, um, backslash seven oh eight. Um, hyphen application. Um, and we'll, we'll put that everywhere. We're trying to talk to you as many community leaders and as many different groups. Please talk to your friends, uh, you all know people, um, about that, that are interested in, in the well-being of, of the mental health board.
How large will the board be?
Nine people. Um. We would like a, a attorney. There's, this is just the, the start of, you're going to hear a whole lot more details, um, being released. Um, but the, we have, the start date is the certification of the election, which was on the twenty-second of November. Um, and so because we, we have that timeframe realizing, so then the due date for these applications is, and this is a non-partisan board. Um, we're looking for everyone and anyone, um, that cares about these issues. Um, and it, it, we're thinking that at the beginning, it's going to take about two or three hours a week. It's volunteer. It is not paid. Um, that helps to help determine where the, um, funds are going to go for the mental health levy. And so that we're looking for their backgrounds, making, making sure that, for example, um, people with. More experience in the topic or more, uh, in occupational, um, background or, um, a profession or a, um, personal background. We want to make sure that the whole community is represented in, um, different ages, different, um, genders. We're looking for diversity and experience. Um, and the, the questions and frankly, they're going to be, what's going to happen is, is you all are going to get their applications. And see who we're talking about and you'll, there'll be a chance for, for interviewing the candidates. So that you can. See who we're talking about.
Why, so as trustees, we're going to be part of this process?
Yes.
Okay.
Question. Hilton supervisor, he spoke at the, uh. The, the, for like everybody, we're the forum that we went to, um. And he spoke, he, they had just approved their board, correct? And he was just beginning to people it. And didn't he speak of having people from all walks of life, like not just in. The medical field. It was like literally all walks of life he was searching for on his board.
We're looking for, for all walks of life. I mean, we're not.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought we were just wanted people, all diversity, but also all with a mental health.
So when you look here, the questions that we're asking and you all will get the, the, all the applicants and their questions. Okay, to be super clear, this is going to be massively transparent. So, um, we're asking, why do you want to be a part of the board? Um, what's your availability? What's your potential conflicts of interest? Making sure that we're, um, not. Choosing anyone that would have an affiliation personally and professionally with an organization that might benefit from their membership.
Okay.
So that's one of the, it'll sort out. Please summarize your personal interest in mental health addictions, disorder, intellectual developmental disability. So what, what gives you the heart for this? Um, as a volunteer physician, what is your community involvement, including current volunteer board roles and previous roles that have relevance? What qualities, experience or skills would you bring to your board membership? And share a goal that you envision for a Lisle Township Community Health Board? And then we need to figure out terms, figuring out, okay, we can't, everybody can't all be up at the same time. Um, so we're trying to figure out. Who's interested in a two-year term? Some people, you know, are, they really would like a two-year term. Some people would really like a four-year term or. And so it's figuring out what, what really is the interest level of the ver, the variety. So please share this with anyone and, and everyone to help make sure that we, we get a, a good wide. Variety and where I'm talking to every group, um, in Lisle Township because we're all. It, it, we're all a township. Um, okay, any other discussions on or questions on the mental health board? That passed with the nineteen percent. Okay, does anybody want to take a, uh, make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Paige. Thank you, trustee guys. Any other discussion?
Reach out the tone and Milton.
And then a roll call vote.
I think that's, I think that's great. I didn't, honestly, I thought we were, I thought we were only looking at people with. Yes, there's profession.
We're gonna take a vote. But.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
That's not.
Just, just you pay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, voting for adjournment.
Oh.
Trustee Paige.
I.
Supervisor here.
I, sorry, we are.
Turn.